Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 4th. Welcome to our school committee meeting. We're going to call this meeting to order. Just a reminder that this meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcast. And please silence all your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. If I could have a motion, please, to open our meeting?
So moved. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, our nation under God, in whose goal liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. If I could request a motion, please, of approval of the public hearing minutes of March 7, 2023. So moved.
Aye.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, approval of payroll and warrants. If I could request a motion of approval, please?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we have no individuals signed up to delegation this evening, so we're going to move past that agenda item. No old business. We'll move on to new. So I'll pass it over to Dr. Bailey for the superintendent's report.
Sure. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You will see the personnel report. We have no staff changes since last month. So any questions on that? All right. And next, I'd like to call up to the podium Tammy Jared. She will be highlighting the middle school self-regulated strategy development writing program, otherwise known as SRSD, for grades five through eight. So I'd like to welcome you, Tammy. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Dr. Bailey, and Acushnet community. And I'm going to be talking about our program, our new writing program. It's SRSD. And I think you've had the opportunity to look at the presentation.
Oh, thank you.
So it was a little bit about myself. I don't want to talk too much about myself. But this is my first year here at Ford Middle School, and I'm teaching seventh and eighth grade, working collaboratively with the seventh and eighth grade teachers, one of them being Andrea Mello. She's here for some moral support tonight. Some educational experiences. I'm sure you got the opportunity to look at that. So I have extensive experience in teaching English and English as a second language. I've been a team leader and a curriculum liaison. So a little bit about me. What is SRSD? Self-regulated strategy development. We felt like in the middle school that we needed a formulaic way of writing, and this seemed like the perfect program in helping our students to develop that innate ability to write. So in alignment to the district plan, it was 1.1, establish a consistent model of instruction across classrooms and grade levels that engages students. And in action, the plan looks something like implementing a consistent writing program across English Language Arts as well as social studies. So we're working collaboratively with the social studies teachers as well. They're implementing the same program so that the kids are... It's becoming routine and innate to them in the way that they write, so it doesn't look any different from English to social studies. And in helping them to move on to high school and perhaps beyond with the ability to write independently. So what is SRSD? So it's a six-step formulaic way of writing. I'm going to say that word a lot, formulaic way of writing. So with stage one, you activate and develop background knowledge, which can look something like a pre-assessment test on whatever they're writing or a classroom discussion, just to kind of gather, you know, their knowledge about the topic. Stage two, there are graphic organizers that we use consistently, and they follow a certain mnemonic. So we would preview those, and then we talk about self-talk. So in helping the students to understand that we all self-talk, perhaps when we write, sometimes out loud, sometimes to ourselves, and letting them know that that's okay. They also do a lot of peer editing, so we show them the rubrics and how to go about that. And then we also share model essays with them, so that they know what the expectation is. And then for stage three, the teacher models planning. So I could be standing at the back of the classroom, and I'm modeling what I'm filling out in the graphic organizer to help the students. And they're just sort of... They're doing their own work, but they're also paying attention to what I'm doing and helping them to understand what the expectation is. And then also self-talk statements. So what I had my students do was initially write their self-talk statements on their writing folders. So when they grab their writing folders, they're just looking at them and sort of helping themselves. "I'm stuck. What do I do next? I know how to write a good introduction." So just things that are helping them to sort of move the process along. Then stage four is the mnemonic graphic organizers. So for instance, there are several. So we might have one called TIG. So they represent certain parts of writing. So TIG could be topic sentence or thesis, and then details, and then explain it. So mnemonics is a good way in helping students to remember things. The one that stands out to me from middle school is PEMDAS. That's a mnemonic, and I still remember it. So hopefully, you know, the students will begin to kind of innately remember that. And stage five was continuing to support the students. What I did want to mention, so I can speak to seventh and eighth grade, but also the students are working with this program in fifth and sixth grade as well. So when they come up to us, they've already been introduced to most of these things, and it should be more of a quicker sort of getting into the writing part of it as opposed to the six stages. And then stage six, independent use of strategies, and the strategy's become innate. So an example of that was this week, we had a writing, and I didn't give them an organizer, and I said, "Try to remember, you're tied when you're writing." So they had asked me the question, "Well, if I have a blank piece of paper, will I be able to kind of write it down if I remember it?" And I said, "Certainly." So it's coming along in that regard. So what's next? That's basically everything that we're doing. So we're continuing to support and monitor student writing and progress in reaching their full potential into high school and perhaps beyond. I did put a couple of graphics in. So for seventh grade, I did term two and term three, because that's when we really started to use it. So you can see there is an increase in class average for all three of my seventh grade class periods. So that was seventh grade. And then eighth grade, also an increase. And while we did get to look at the bar graphs, I did put together a packet of three different essays where students... Or I should say, where I have the MCAS scores for them from last year. Of course, no names on them, the MCAS scores from last year, and then their most recent essays. So I put together two seventh grade examples and one eighth grade example, so it might make more sense if I pass it out. So on the left-hand side are the scoring rubrics that the MCAS, the state uses to score essays. And as you can see, this is six going into seven, and this is a seventh going into eight, and it's a five-point score. And then conventions is a three-point score. So on the right-hand side, I gave you a copy of student essays. So what I tried to do was I stapled their score or their actual writing from last year, and then on the essay packet I wrote what the equivalent score would be if they took it this year and they wrote the way in which they wrote this most recent essay. So the first one was, I think they scored like an idea development, a one, and conventions, a one. And scoring their most recent piece of writing, it would score a high four, it's a seventh grade, and then a three for the second one. So it was scored a one, and then a zero in conventions. It scored a three. And that's their actual essay, the first page. And then the eighth grade student also scored a five on their most recent essay using the SRSD writing program. Anyone have any questions?
So forgive me, I am ignorant.
No.
But is this just a more in-depth structure of the five-by-five that I grew up with? Does it do a five-by-five essay as a learning center, resupplying and applying?
It is a similar program. Yep.
More in-depth?
So more, yes, it's more in-depth and more, again, I'm going to use the word, it's more formulaic. So the introduction is made up of three different parts, and then each body, as you said, is made up of the three ideas that they have in the thesis statement or what they're trying to prove, and then conclusion is of course the wrap-up. So it's basically a five, it is a five-paragraph essay, and hopefully, we're going to go, you know, a little bit further than that, than the five paragraph. But just teaching them that structure, then we can sort of move on to the next thing. And I think as you can see with the essays that they were writing, the MCAS essays that they wrote last year, they weren't really even writing essays. So I'm not sure if they just didn't understand what the prompt was, but we actually sat down with the students and went over their scores from last year, and they were very shocked. They would act, they were actually saying things like, "That's not even an essay," or "I can't believe I only wrote that," or... And they're understanding this is missing or that is missing, which makes me feel really good, and I'm sure the other English teachers as well, that they're understanding that there are parts to the essay that they need to, that they need to complete.
Prior to this program, were we teaching, you know, five-by-five or, you know, were we teaching that at all?
This is my first year here. I don't know.
I was curious, like, that was like sixth grade, and that is the school.
The five-paragraph essay was some, was a form that they were familiar with.
Oh, they were.
They, yeah, absolutely.
So they had been taught at least that.
Yes.
Basic.
Yes.
It's nice that it's aligned with the other grade levels, so that, as Ms. Jared said, when the kids come up, they're already familiar with the process, and it just continues to get strengthened as they move up in the grades. Ms. Jared, you've certainly been a nice addition to our middle school team. Really appreciate your time tonight. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes, I can.
Oh, Mr. Hallman.
Just questions on the approach. I didn't see words like creative thinking, imagery, critical thinking and writing. I didn't see any, it seemed to be more of a mechanical type of approach, memorize, you know, Pavlov and the Dork type of approach. And I, so that's my impression.
Okay, so for this type of writing, yes, because it's argumentative or informative writing. But for narrative writing, that's where they would be more creative. So I could bring examples of their narrative writing, but I really just wanted to show you the progress that they've made from taking the MCAS last year to this year. But there is creativity in their narrative writing.
Does that be a motivational factor in the youngsters and basically?
It definitely is. You are correct.
You know, to really try to achieve and really deal with the mechanics?
Yes.
So I, that's, you know, the impression I get was very, very, very mechanical.
It is.
I'd just like to toss that up.
It is. I think, well, it is mechanical in that they need to learn what an essay consists of, and they can't do that if they're just taking pen to paper and they don't understand the steps of how to create an essay. But the narrative piece is a more creative way of expressing themselves.
Is the MCAS scoring creative or narrative writing, right, so they're testing on, sort of, like?
Yes.
Well, one of the criticisms of test is basically that it's more mechanical and it's less creativity and independent thought.
I think you get a lot of that in preschool, creative writing, well, in middle school, you're beginning, but.
I, well.
It's pretty much the basis first, right? Yeah, you need to learn how to walk before you learn how to run. And our kids had a lot of trouble even walking. So getting to that with this new program is what I'm understanding.
Yes.
And then eventually, you know, maybe eighth graders will get to be, or even, no, you're still doing the creative part of it, just.
Yes, we do some creative writing in class as well. Yep.
But the eighth grade really gets to be creative as well once they've learned, maybe the upper, higher grades, I'm assuming, get to be more creative once they've learned the basis of how to write in the first place.
Yes. In high school and even in college, this is really the type of writing that they're looking for the kids to be able to understand and be able to do. They need to know how to argue a point, and they need to know how to inform using evidence. And that's just like the reality of it. But right, the creativity is also important, narratively writing. But at this point in time, we're just trying to teach them how to write an essay.
College essay, I would say, is more narrative, but right?
And they're doing that with junior year now, sophomore, junior year. My daughter's now.
There's a little buzz. I don't know where that's coming from.
This is, like, what I'm seeing here with the six steps, that's not communicated to the kids. Like, that's not given to them and saying, "Hey, this is, this is what we're doing." I, my impression of this was, was that it's really formative for the instructor?
Well, they do understand that that's what we're doing. So I might say, okay, I'm not going to say we're doing stage one, but I might say, you know, I'm going to model essay writing today. So they do understand that there are steps to it that we go through before we start to actually write the essay. They do understand that. They do understand that there are steps that we take in class in order to get to the essay writing part of it.
See, I like this, though, because when I see stuff like this, it just, it shows me that this is being taught across all classrooms.
It is.
Right? So there's a, there's really a structure to what's being taught across the grade level, so that all the students, for example, in seventh grade are getting the same experience, right?
Yes, exactly.
Which is allowing the teachers to kind of differentiate off of this. It creates that structure, right?
Yes.
When we're going to eighth grade, for example, you're not be able to pick out who had which teacher or something like that. What is really allowing that to spiral, as you're saying, for grade level to grade level, right?
Yes, with the consistency. So fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I put this back on the agenda. We had the district calendar on the agenda from last month, and the committee wanted to table it for this month or the future to wait to see what Frehhaven High School is doing. And as of today, we still don't have an answer for their calendar. So I didn't know if you wanted to move it out another month or if you wanted to take a vote on this calendar. I do know that some people have been calling for the calendar, but I cannot publish this at all until this committee votes upon it, accepting it. So it's a really, a pleasure of the committee.
Dr. Bailey, is there another question?
We find voting on it tonight or do we want to wait?
Yeah, if there was some conflict next week, we could always go back.
I thought we talked about that.
It's pretty difficult because things start to get stressful.
I know they did send out a survey, I think last, yeah, it was last week, to the Frehaven parents.
I saw that, yeah.
Asking about one of the dates.
I know you guys had a discussion on it last time. I was feeling different on all the things, but I understood the... I got somebody in the Heyman. It'd be nice if they had the same P E day or whatever it was.
Right, right.
Isn't that what it was?
Yeah.
Multiple children, is that why?
Am I doing something?
With the corn or something?
It does, I guess.
It must be the chairs.
It is what it is. So, I mean, I post my notes.
So if it's a four and a half, it aligns and just table.
I'm fine with moving forward. I also know we have to do our own planning for our own district, so. If I could have a motion, please, to approve the calendar for the 2023-2024 district calendar. Well, it still says draft. Is that?
It won't say draft once this gets approved.
Okay. So a motion to approve 2023-2024 district calendar? So moved. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Calendar's approved.
Thank you. I mean, I still heard there were like three versions for Frehaven still, so.
I think we should send our approved calendar over to you.
Now you're talking. Next up, we have the technology update with Ms. Missler.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, school committee members. Dr. Bailey, this is going to be pretty quick for me. I have no idea why that's doing that. This one's great. Just going to enunciate here. So it's state testing time. We are all hands on deck for state testing. Principal's doing a great job getting everything ready. Pretty much every admin is involved in this. So that's kind of what's taking all our time. We're running around the buildings, getting everything perfect. Paper cut. I've talked about this a few times. The system we have placed for copiers, it allows you to use your badge. When we first rolled it out, we set up guest access so the teachers could ease into it, and then we removed the guest access once they got more confident in it. And it's actually been fantastic, because sometimes we'll hit two or three copiers down based on either no toner at that moment, a jam, or a part replacement. It allows teachers to kind of go and badge out to another one. It's been pretty darn good. So that's been well received. How-tos. We've been putting how-tos up. You'll see if you go to like the auditorium in the CAF for FMS or even AES. This how-to's now up on the wall that show how to utilize the audio system, because we found that people are just turning knobs, adjusting things in time, and it kind of does this. So in order to kind of break that habit of changing knobs, we have a beautiful how-to up there, kind of streamlines things. And then we've been doing it kind of everywhere we can to make things easy for staff. Outside of that, just happy spring, everyone, and yeah, it's business as usual. Any questions, concerns? Thank you, guys.
So how are we doing on that plan? Are we still aiming for the end of June of the whole year?
For the 10-year plan? Yes, absolutely. You may actually have it at the end of or the beginning of next school committee meeting, excuse me. So that's where our goal is. We're still on par for that. So yeah, you guys should have it soon.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Missler. And the last thing I have, it's not on here, but I just wanted to remind you that we're, the ATA is sponsoring the Harlem Wizards versus the Acushnet Teachers tomorrow night at Vog Tech at 7:00. It should be a fun-filled evening, very entertaining if anybody would like to join us. And you're welcome to play basketball, too, if that's, you know, but for the public as well, if people want to join in the fun. It's a really great cause for the scholarships for our kids, so.
I know who sing the national anthem to.
Oh, really? Oh, good. That's so great.
Oh, that's so great.
So you'll be there?
I'll be there.
Are you playing basketball?
I'm not. I'm going to be nervous in the back just because she makes it through the song.
She will. That's so wonderful.
I'll be there, too.
Oh, good. Are you playing?
No, no, no. I'll be in the stands.
Seven, jam at Vog.
It's at Vog. It starts at seven. The doors open at six.
And you can get tickets online.
You can get tickets online.
At the door, too.
Is it at the door, too?
Yeah, we got, we got them in advance.
Okay.
They're more expensive at the door.
Yeah, get them, get them online.
Okay. So we're really excited about that, but that concludes my report tonight.
Are you playing basketball?
I am not. I'm going to take pictures. I'm taking, I'm the photographer.
Excellent. That sounds like a fun event. All right.
Yeah.
So we have a business manager's report.
Thank you, Chair Downing, school committee. I'm going to fly through this as quick as possible. I know we have executive session to look forward to. So fiscal '23 budget, we're in good shape at the end of the day. I don't want to overshare on the bottom line at this point without dialing in exactly, but I look to do that within the next couple weeks. From there, I anticipate reporting, obviously, to Dr. Bailey, Budget Subcommittee. We'll have discussions with where we're landing, but right now, we're in good shape. We had the tuition savings from, you know, the error that we identified. There's been discussions with the town that we utilized some of that money to fund our stabilization for special ed, and there's some other ideas being thrown around, preliminary at this point, to put it into some sort of insurance fund to help offset the cost for insurance for our, for our staff here. The FY '24 budget, so good news. On March 29, the Finance Committee met, and not unexpectedly, but we weren't on the agenda, but they did review our budget, and they voted to unanimously support it. So that's exciting. You know, the job's not over yet, though. We still need to attend, have our, you know, residents attend town meeting and support the school budget. You know, it's crucial to what we do here, and we don't want to take any chances with that. Progress on the facilities, the roof replacement. So finally, we expect to wrap up this project over school vacation. Fingers crossed. We're coming in under budget or, you know, just about at budget, and I'm working with the town again to finalize those numbers to see what they need to go out for to secure debt. Solar projects, so we presented a couple months ago, I think, at this point, on the potential idea of a solar canopy on campus over the parking lots, an outdoor classroom. We, we repeated the same presentation in front of the Board of Selectmen on March 28, and they also supported the project. What we failed to do is get a vote to sign a letter of intent that will allow us to, you know, enter into a contract if we see it deemed fit. So I'm going to go back in front of them on the 10th, make sure that they can vote to support a letter of intent. The town administrator will sign it, and then we can kind of put the pieces together, get some renderings, have a public information session, you know, get school committee's final buy-in if, again, we have the appetite for it. And then that would go to spring annual town meeting as well to be able to enter into the project and start on something exciting that's going to save both us and the town some money. Good news on the surplus front. So over February vacation, we did have that surplus sale, as I reported last month. We've since, you know, had those two, two units removed from the campus and off of our expense list. So we're no longer paying the bills for those two more, two units. We do have two more to go, and we're diligently working on that. Food service, so meal counts are in front of you, pretty much status quo from what we've seen all these other months. One thing I wanted to get ahead of was, the state is sort of tweaking things a little bit, where they're forcing the hand of schools that meet the community eligibility provision to adopt it. Essentially, what they're doing is passing the buck so that when they implement the universal free meals for schools, the federal government has to pay for more of the reimbursement than the state. So by entering it to CEP, that makes the feds kind of pay a bigger portion, and then the state's going to bridge that gap to make sure we get full reimbursement. Right now, the threshold's 40% per school. We are coming in at about 37% at AES and a little less than that at FMS. So right now, we don't meet CEP. We still have to apply, make sure that, you know, they trust our calculations and don't find that we meet it. And then there's talks that they might even lower the threshold to 30%, and that's based on our free and reduced meal counts. So it'll be interesting. We're on top of it. I have some experience with applying for CEP, so I think we're in good shape there. Other matters, something exciting that we applied for back in December. Other matters, something exciting that we applied for back in December. As far as safety and security goes, continues to be a hot topic. But for safety out on the middle road front, we applied for a grant to receive these combination dynamic feed, speed feedback and school zone speed limit sign assemblies. And we won the grant and we were awarded two, to my knowledge, at least two. You know, one at the beginning and end of each school zone. They're gonna be solar operated, so you don't have to run any wiring or anything like that. We're just gonna need to dig a footing, you know, get them in place in accordance with the zoning. And we'll have some signage up on the street to hopefully slow some cars down. Mr. Tevz?
Any movement on getting the solid double lines up there?
So we actually tried to address that this year while they were painting it. But because they have to go out to bid for the process to paint the road lines throughout the town, they actually have to give the plans at that point in time and can't change anything. So it's on the docket for next year for when they, you know, go out to bid that those lines become solid. We fortunately got the. Huh? Yeah, I know. Well, it's. Yeah, it should help. And we got the crosswalks painted solid, so that was great, too. But no, we are actually excited about this. And, you know, we communicated with DPW. Their hands are full right now. They're gonna try to help us as much as we can, but we've kind of stood by it. It's in our best interest to move forward this, with this regardless. And if we have to tap into some of the use of facilities revolving funds to get this done, you know, that we're willing and able to do that. So that's really all I have, if anyone has any questions.
I actually do. I mean, my two cents, but one of the things we removed from our budget was the phone system. And I know we were sort of relying on potentially grants to fill that gap. And I wonder if there was any progress on.
Yeah, so we are relying mainly on the safety and security grant that we applied for, again, maybe January. I don't know off the top of my head. Expectations were they were gonna let districts know if they rewarded the grant in March. They have communicated that they had significant interest in it and applications more than they expected. So I think that's really delaying the process. I've kind of been letting it float before I reach out again to see where they're at, but it's on my radar as well. If that doesn't happen, I mean, I think in executive session, too, we can discuss the options with, you know, patching it and getting us through to be compliant. But right now, we're crossing our fingers for that grant. You know, again, potentially, if there's surplus, we can talk about using some surplus to fund that project and address that need. And then if push came to shove, you know, we would potentially need to go to town meeting in the fall and ask for some capital support.
Okay. Thanks for the update.
Has there been confirmation that there is gonna be a fall town meeting?
As far as I, I mean, there's been talks about if this doesn't happen, then you'll have the opportunity in the fall. So I'm going off of that unofficially.
Background, last year was the first time in a very long time that we had two meetings.
Okay. Yeah, so again, unofficially, it's kind of in conversation. It seems like it's anticipated, but, you know, don't hold me for that either. All right, thank you for your time.
Any other questions?
Sure.
On the food, this would be probably anecdotal, but youngsters participating, do they like the food as it is, you know, with having changes, you know, for us health? Are they participating? Or are they putting, you know, their stuff in the barrels?
So that's a tough one. You know, they are participating. We're seeing in what we believe is increases. It's been tough to analyze because one month you have vacation and days off and PD days and things like that. Other months, you have a full month and, you know, the number counts are up. We do believe that overall, the counts are up. The amount that, you know, to say goes to waste, I'm not, I'm not certain. You know, I know we did an opening day meal where, you know, hot dogs were served and we sold out of hot dogs. So, you know, kids are. Yeah, no.
Comment on that anecdotally. When I go around at lunchtime, I kind of check in with the kids and I'm not looking at the numbers. I'm, hey, what's for lunch today? How's your lunch? And I'm not hearing that they don't like the lunch. Everyone always seems to say it's good. You know, I think it was chicken today, chicken nuggets. But the kids seem happy with our lunches.
I went to a Boy Scout event and I was talking with, you know, some of the scouts and I asked them how they liked school and, you know, that conversation. And they said they loved the Ford Middle School and everything. But they wish they had, you know, they wanted, you know, lunch was an issue with them. I just want to toss that out.
Yeah, so, you know, again, without oversharing, we did mention last meeting that we're gonna kind of report back in June on everything that we've tried, you know, new things. I mean, we've just had someone in the kitchen to assess the equipment, see what sort of other equipment there is out there to bring some of the cooking in-house and, you know, make things from scratch rather than, you know, buy processed and frozen foods. So we're looking at those avenues. We're already analyzing the sugar content compared to what the laws are that are gonna be in place that are gonna, you know, force things in or off of our menu. So we're making waves. It's just, you know, one step at a time. And we're gonna be excited to report back to you, you know, at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Patrick. Open the floor for any school committee member reports.
I have one. Can I just, just not, I'm being provocative, but the, there's a report that came out in March on high school grad, high school participation, no, in college with Boston Public Schools. And that there has been a 20, maybe 20% drop in, in, in high school, you know, in college participation in Boston Public Schools. And there's about maybe a 10% going down in the statewide of, statewide, there is probably a drop in about, from 73%, or 74% to 63% in college participation, you know. And they cite some of the reasons of why this drop-off. It's alarming that that's, some of it's doing to learning fatigue amongst students. It may apply to high school more than, but at least it gives an idea that what we should probably be looking at. And also the shift to online learning that took place in COVID, you know, that the youngsters could not interface with a lot of their guidance counselors and things like that. So, but it's alarming that they, you know, that this, you know, that this trend, and it seems the trend would be, you know, even went into 2022, that this, you know, as it progresses. I don't know how our high, you know, our youngsters, honestly, go to high school and go to college. How many go? What a participation rate? And I don't know if that's, that information is ever available.
We've asked that before.
Yeah. And compared with, you know, other students, you know, at the same, same school. And whether, if, if there is a trend of less participation going to college, for example. And this is our major goal. That's why we're here, is basically every youngster, you know, in Acushnet should be, go to college or training or, you know, technical training and so forth. This is our whole dream. This is why we exist. And whether there's some issues that may be, have to be addressed in curriculum in the future if, if in turn this problem is, and whether on our level, whether it is, can be solved or worked on or is it basically in the secondary education curriculum and operations? That's where it's gonna be alleviated. So I just wanted to toss this out that we, you know, that this is one of the focal points that maybe Superintendent, when all her other duties, can do some research to find out what's happening to whether our youngsters, you know, once they go to college and what our rate of participation is.
And whether, is that something the committee would like me to do?
We've done it in the past. I don't think it was.
I think we've struggled getting that data.
Right, it's very difficult because we don't own our own high schools.
They're not in our computer system.
Right. It is hard to track. And it's also hard to track because so many kids these days are taking that semester off before going into college. So they might be going to college or going to a trade school or hairdressing school or wherever they're going. But you lose track because they didn't go right from senior year. So I think we can try to find the information with the high schools that we're going into. I mean, I would like to know.
I would certainly reach out and try to do that.
See how we go. But it, but just note that it's gonna be.
Right.
Yeah, I understand. But if the Department of Education gets, gets that information, you know, from the schools, because this is why, you know, with some of the figures that I cited, you know, statewide participation and so forth, then that, what reports they send, you know, the sending schools, you know, we have, you know, where they can have that information and just clean it out, you know, to Acushnet, you know, Acushnet kids. But they do have a reporting system on youngsters going to college and being, you know, and survive six years.
Who does?
Department of Education. This is where the figures came from, that, you know, that I cited. I'll send you the copy of the article that I.
My concern would be that, I mean, we only have them until eighth grade. What they do in high school, we don't have any control over unless we start talking about regionalization, which will be brought up a couple more times before I leave here. But again, the focus of what you're asking, what are we to do as a, a Acushnet?
Right, we want to make sure that we're spending our time on.
Well, the foundations of going to college or higher education, what they, starts with preschool. You know what I'm saying? We all know that.
We're making sure that our kids are ready for high school, though. We're making sure. That's what we're doing with all this curriculum. Right, all the new grid rating curriculum.
I understand that. This is why we talk about, especially with the, with, you know, the challenges that COVID had brought with our youngsters and our school system and our teachers. That, it, that setback, can we over, what can we do?
I mean, I think the data would be interesting to see if it's accessible. If the data is accessible, I think. But you make a good point that I don't think the data will be, there'll be flaws in the data. Unless, unless when, when a student goes to college, that the college is then reporting to DESI.
My concern is.
And tracking that child back to high school, that's the only way they would.
But when Fairhaven sends their information to who is going to college right from senior year, it doesn't say this Acushnet child is going to college. It just says Fairhaven High School. So what are we gonna go through each one and look at them and look at their addresses?
Good point, right.
With the computers, you know, YouTube knows exactly what kind of music I like. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't think they're trained that way.
With computers, be it, any information is, you know, I can't understand that.
See what you can.
You know, that we can't find that. We can't.
Be interesting to see if we get the data.
You know, you know.
But don't waste a lot of time. Like, if you have to go through every single one and see if they're Acushnet student. Or if it's.
I mean, I can just ask the questions. And if I can get it, I will be more than happy to bring it back to the table.
Make formal requests. Make it, you know, that we, you know, it helps us in our, in your, in your plan, not my, you know, because you're the superintendent. But it helps in your planning, you know what I'm saying? And ratcheting down all the buzzwords that we have in that, you know, so we can, where do we really go? You know what I'm saying?
I think college, the price of college needs.
That is another factor, too.
I think that's a big factor for many people.
Yes, I do, too.
And you know, it's another factor is that wages of blue collar workers are rising higher, you know, not higher, but at greater length.
Yes.
Than, than a white collar. You know, so, you know, so it, through the shortages, I mean.
Well, then you get into macro economics.
You get into a lot of things that beyond consideration.
I think we just opened up a can of worms. I'm really large.
And is college really the goal, then?
Right.
No, but I mean it.
Get out of college. Three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, there's also, there's also, you know, placement training. So they're creating courses and curriculum directly. Hey, come work for us and we're gonna train you.
Right.
So there's a lot of.
There's military, there's all kinds of options for kids.
It's not my line. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Haukraff, for your, for your comment on that. And so there are some communications in the agenda in our packets, which we can all review in our own time. We do have executive session this evening. We will not be returning to open meeting. Executive session this evening will be to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, particularly the Acushnet Teachers Association contracts or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. Votes may be taken. We will also be discussing the approval of the executive session minutes of February 7th, 2023, which will not be, will not be released, as well as security, personnel or devices, discussion on recommendations with regard to safety and security audit that we had. So if I could have a motion, please, to adjourn.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Before we do that.
Oh, sure.
I just want to point out in your packets, there is a letter from the Acushnet Grange, and they will be recognizing the Acushnet Elementary School because Acushnet did receive the National Distinguished School Recognition. Every year, they honor a member of the town with the Community Citizenship Award for Outstanding Service. And this award this year will be the Acushnet Elementary School because of the recognition. So we will be sending some representatives to their meeting on May 4th. I just wanted to explain that.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. That's great. So if I could have a motion, please, to adjourn?
So. Second.
Any further discussion or last comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Do we need a roll call vote to go into a session?
I was just gonna say that. Thank you, Mr. Haukraff. And take a roll call vote. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukraff?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dammel?
Yes.
Thank you. 6:20.
And just to make note for the public, our next school committee meeting will be held here in the John De Vars Library on Tuesday, May 9th at 5:30 PM. Thank you.